Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the meeting to order. It's a pleasure to see everybody tonight. If you would, please remember to silence your electronic devices, and if you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Well, we'll do the invocation first. Your Lord, we ask you to bless our meeting tonight. Grant us wisdom, patience, compassion, to make sound decisions that promote the common good of all. We pray in a special way tonight for all those affected by the tragic building collapse in Sunrise. We ask you to provide protection for the recovery crews to keep them safe and comfort to the families of those who've lost loved ones. We also pray for all those affected by the recent tropical storm and are thankful that our city was unharmed. We thank you for our safe and successful Independence Day celebration and for the amazing community we call home. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. As always, it's a pleasure to see people in the gallery again. We went through a long period of time. We didn't have anybody. So it's a, it's nice to have these meetings and look at and see faces. So with that, first order of business is a proclamation. If Leisure Services Director Carl Langfeld would approach the podium, please. Good evening, Mr. Langfeld. This is a very timely proclamation. This is for all of our Leisure Services and Parks and Rec staff. And so whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, and our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community, region. And whereas Parks and Recreation provides therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled and improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and our park and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, Temple Terrace recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Park and Recreation Month. Carl, would you like to say a few words?
I'm the mayor, members of council, our line of leisure services director. Nearly eighteen months ago, Parks and Recreation fell silent as we started dealing with COVID. As we learned more about COVID and how COVID affected our population, we were able to strategically and responsibly reopen and reengage with our community to provide services to them that we had to stop for a period of time. We are now at a point where we are almost back to 100%. The family complex is full of children again, whether they're in summer youth program, gymnastics camp, tennis camps, or swim lessons are bursting at the seams. It is great to have the children back. It is great to have the noise back. It is great to have the chaos back. More importantly, and what we showed this past weekend, despite some of the sketchy weather, it is great to welcome the community back, to invite the community to reengage with each other through the events that Parks and Recreation puts on, whether it be Fourth of July, which we just had, and we're looking forward to a full slate of events through the fall with our Fall Festival, with the Arts Festival, with Winter Wonderland coming up, where we can bring the community back out 100% and have everybody reengage with each other again and use Parks and Recreation as that vessel to do so. It is great to be back. It is great to have everybody back, and this is a very timely proclamation. So thank you very much.
Yes, it is. And thank you, Carl. Our next item of business is approval of the June 15th City Council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
No, the press.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any corrections or discussion of the minutes from June 15th? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed. The minutes are passed. We have one more. We have the approval of the July 6th City Council meeting minutes from Tuesday night.
I move to approve that.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections or discussion of the minutes from the other night? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved. Next item is persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. As normal, council, as normal, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. We do ask that speakers come to the podium so that your comments can be captured on the record. And please state your name and city of residence at the beginning of your presentation. We'd like to reassure the public that during public comment, the directors present, council members, the acting city manager, take all of your comments and suggestions seriously, and we do follow through with that. So currently, I have one, there are forms in the back of the room for anybody who would like to speak. I currently have one from Ms. Jan Tumbelson. Welcome, Ms. Tumbelson. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, council, thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank all the department heads of the city for the wonderful activities on July 4th, July 3rd. Okay. I'm here to give you better information than I had several meetings ago. Annie Ross, our mayor, stated there was good information from the Transportation Planning Organization in that meeting. This is about the traffic around and in Temple Terrace. I know that sometimes you get wrong information even though it's supposedly valid. All the emails that I had was sent by Hillsborough County, F dot MPO, and I thought they were valid. Okay. What I presented to y'all, and y'all have a handout, regarding an email that I received from Sarah McKinley about the level of service in and around Temple Terrace. And as you can see, from Fowler to between 50th Street going east to I-75 is a C. Now, going west from Fowler to 50th Street between Fowler Avenue and I-75 is a D. Okay, Fletcher between 46 and east to I-75 is a C. Fletcher Avenue between 46th Street going west to I-75 is an F. 56th Street going south from Fowler to Bush is a C. Okay, 56th going south from Bush to Sly is an F. Bush Garden going east from 30th to 56th is a C. Bush Bullard Parkway, including Temple Terrace Highway, is a C and a D. Transportation in Hillsborough County has various organizations, and it's hard to get involved and get well-coordinated. Okay, thank you very much. I hope this straightens out a lot of the things that I've given you before, which were incomplete and invalid. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tumbelson. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council? Okay, Ms. Tumbelson, don't feel too bad because we up here have difficulty sometimes getting accurate information about things too. So it's, we understand. It's, there's a lot of hands in the pie. There's a lot of places, and so it's very difficult. We get it.
Yes.
Well, thank you for being here. Nobody else. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is a lien reduction petition for property located at 108 Oak Ridge Avenue. Our Code Enforcement Board Chairman, David Pogorlitch, will explain. Welcome, Mr. Pogorlitch.
Thank you, David Pogorlitch, Chairman of the Code Board. I'm going to ask for your indulgence this evening because this one's going to take a little longer to explain than the norm, our normal lien reductions. This particular lien reduction actually started back in January of 2000, I'm sorry, in October of 2020, where the respondent was found to be in violation of doing work without proper permits, five to be exact. It ultimately came in front of us in January 13th of 2021, when they were found to be in violation. At that meeting, it was explained to them that in order to become into compliance, they had to actually get the five permits. Hundred and eighteen days later, at $25 a day for a total fine at that time of $2,950, the respondent finally got the permits. As you know, they had to be in compliance for, I believe it's 90 days, before they can ask for a lien reduction, which they did, and that's why I'm here. So ultimately, they came to us again in June, asked for a lien reduction. At that time, Officer Barone came in front of us, up front of the board, and explained that his particular crew had made 14 visits out to the site and was asking for a lien reduction, no greater, for $615, which equates to $43.93 per visit. Pretty much a bargain. The respondent testified that he thought it should be lower because he had allegedly paid a red tag fee and had allegedly paid increased costs for the permits he did receive or did ultimately get. I'd like to remind people that those particular fines, those fees for the red tag fee and the increased cost of the permits, those go to the billing department. They don't pay for code enforcement officers. They don't pay for the visits that, the 14 visits that are code officers had to make out to this particular site. But that was their reasoning. They asked for a bigger reduction because they allegedly paid a red tag fee and increased cost for their, for the permits. The board ultimately deliberated and decided that the recommendation that they would ask me to bring to you tonight would be $300, not the $615 recommended by Officer Barone, who explained, in addition to the 14 visits, there was obviously multiple notices and multiple hours spent by not just his code officers, but by the clerk as well. I'll stand for questions.
Well, prior to the questions, are the property owner or petitioner here to make any statements?
They appear to be, yes.
Okay. If you'd like to make a statement, now's the time, folks. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
This is Marfia Zaman, the owner of One Way Oak Ridge Avenue. I would like my uncle.
Having a little trouble hearing you.
Okay.
I don't know if it's the mask or maybe just speak loud. I'm not sure which, but.
It's okay. It's okay. I will speak louder. This is Marfia Zaman, the owner of One Way Oak Ridge Avenue, Temple Terrace, 32607, 17. I'd like my uncle to talk on my behalf. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir, mayor and the council. First of all, we're very grateful to the board for understanding the circumstances, how we got to where we did, and our lien has been already significantly reduced. It is now at 300 some dollars, so we are very grateful for that already, if it doesn't get any further reduced. However, we felt.
Let me clarify that. It's been recommended to be reduced to 300.
Yes, sir. Okay.
That happens tonight.
Okay, okay. But, yes, my name is Fakir Hussein. I'm of 110 Oak Ridge Avenue, just next door. But our request is that we are not fined at all, and I will lay out the ground for that. First of all, we were doing work without permit. That has been established. We have been found guilty. But before we commenced any work, we had a number of meetings with the, with the city, and we had discussed a major expansion of the property and so on and so forth, and the design was in process. And only problem we had was with the existing structure, the roof was severely leaking, and we wanted to just stop the roof from, from leaking and causing any further damage. So we asked and we got a permit for roofwork. But during the roofwork, it discovered that a lot of wood trusses were damaged by termites and so on and so forth. So we had to do some additional work, which was the one they were in question in terms of without having done without permit. So once we got the red tag, we understood that, okay, we need additional permit. So, but the design was in process for the entire property. And the officer who gave us the red tag, she called me and I explained to her that we have met with the head of the department and we're now designing this whole thing. It's not going to be just small thing designed. So she first initially said, okay, don't worry about this. Ignore the red tag. We're going to set it aside. Just completely forget about it. So I thought this was over. So a week later, she called me back, and she said, okay, I had a discussion with Mr. Amir, and we're not going to set it, we're not going to cancel it, but what we're going to do, we're going to set it aside until such time that he got the whole building design, and we will then deal with this at that point. So I felt that was the end of it, and I said, okay, but the design phase is still early on. It's going to take a little bit of time. She said, okay, as soon as it's ready, give it to me. I was then traveling overseas, and all of a sudden, we got a notice that we have a red tag and we're going to be in front of the board to defend why are we not applying for permits or why are we not addressing this situation. So I tried to call her a number of times, but I never get a response back. I then ran into Mr. Doug, and I said, look, there is a lady inspector. I can't get ahold of her. And she told me she was going to set it aside, but we're now being persecuted and so on and so, what is the story? But nevertheless, I came in front of the board, and the board, this, the confusion arose. The board said, okay, we understand the circumstances. We will give you until the next meeting time to be in compliance, you know, just get your application in as soon as possible. So within one week of that meeting, we put the application in. What we misunderstood was what was the ask of the board. The board asked us to be in compliant within, before the next meeting, which meant we would have had to get the permit, pay for the fees, and secure the permit by that time. But it would not have been possible because it takes number of weeks for the city to review and get these things. So if I understood that what I was being asked to really be compliant, I would have come the next meeting and requested the board that our application is already in, please grant us such time until the permit is issued. So we didn't even show up in that meeting, and then we got the letter saying that we're now starting the $25 fine because you haven't got the permit. We're like, we already applied. So that's what I thought was the expectation from me, that we actually apply for the permit. Because beyond the application, everything else is in city's hand, when the review. So once I got this letter, I called the city in panic, hey, this is happening. They just said, look, it's going to be in queue. It's going to be reviewed in order. You just have to wait. Well, but I were paying $25 each day. They said, well, you shouldn't have done the work in the first place. But the work that we were doing first, we thought we were doing it permit. This is just misunderstanding. We didn't have any criminal intent to do any of that stuff. But nevertheless, this thing about it took us two, three months to get the permit is not because we were just being lazy and applying. We applied within the week of the first meeting, but it just took us that time to work with the city to then, we even isolated the whole expansion project altogether. Just let's just delete the red tag. We put a brand-new modification in, and we got the, got the permit, and that's when these circumstances happened. And the reason we were a little bit late coming to the board, we had to be in compliant for 35 days and 45 days. So all this time has been dragged on. It's just procedural matters. We're not just sitting around and being lazy or not taking action. We have been proactively working with city throughout. So the city's argument for at least 600 was around the cost recovery because of the visits and so on and so forth. But we felt, you know, we have been working as hard as we can, and we, when we stopped, work order came, we stopped work order, and we have paid far more than 600. I understand one department gets it versus the other department, but we well compensated the city overall with our fines and fees that we paid so far. So that's why we requested that around all this miscommunication, especially initially promise of not to prosecute, which then landed into prosecution in the first place, we just feel that we should not be fined beyond what we already have suffered and, and gone to the pain. That's our humble submission for your consideration, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so I would suggest that you folks maybe sit somewhere close, so if we have questions, I know, we're going to have questions.
Yes, sir.
So I wouldn't go all the way to the back to sit down, just if you want to have a seat up front.
Yes, sir.
Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Council member questions? I know, I know I have a few, but I'd go with Mr. Chambers.
Okay, I have a question of Chairman Pogorlitch. Couple of questions. At a couple, well, a couple of months ago, City Council meeting, we, we heard a lien reduction that was below costs. And I believe this council instructed you to go back to the board and explain that. And then, did you not have a workshop on that, that included this issue?
Well, not only did we not have a work, we did have a workshop, which we explained it, but I also explained it prior to the workshop. So they were explained twice about trying to achieve recouping city cost. They were also explained that, you know, we're not here to try to be a revenue stream for the city, but that we should try to recoup city costs, and that was explained at least twice to them.
Okay, and during the code board meeting that this case was heard, did the board talk about the wishes of City Council to recover the call?
Yes, that was part of the deliberations.
That was well explained and part of their discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I have.
Questions for anybody else while you have the floor?
No.
I have a question.
Councilmember Abel.
So my question is about, in, in the narrative that, that we just heard, that a code enforcement officer allegedly told them to ignore the, the red tag and just until some, some point in the future. I was wondering, did we corroborate that with the code enforcement officer who said that? Do we have any? Did we hear from?
I, I did not personally. That's not part of what we do. I can tell you that it's likely they didn't say it that way because, first of all, that's the billing department. Code enforcement officer can't tell, can't undo what the billing department did. Secondly, this particular project was out of compliance for 118 days. So regardless of whether they told him or not, they were explained when they came in front of the code board what, what, what compliance meant, and it took another 118 days to achieve that.
Thank you.
I, I have a few questions. We have a Community Development Director here, Mr. Nisi. Could you?
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with this case?
Ah, yes.
We've heard, I don't know if it's testimony. We're not having a hearing here, but we've heard statements tonight that indicate that the petitioner paid a, a red tag fee. Is that the case? And if so, can you talk to us about that?
Sure, absolutely. Once the stop work order has been issued, the $350 fine for working without a permit. So we had electrical work without a permit. We had plumbing work without a permit. We had a building work without a permit. So we didn't apply 350 across the board to each individual non-compliance. I think we applied probably to the building and the electrical, two of them out of the four or five. Originally, I think the inspector find out about the work without a permit back in September, issued a citation, issued the stop work order, and then applicant want to expand the home substantially, existing home. Of course, we had to go through the planning stage and review it. So we told the applicant number of the times, the proposed addition supersede the existing home, and it's not possible to do that. So, and again, they were not happy to what they'd been told. They just keep pressing. That's what they want. So ultimately, we told them that you better focus on the existing home and bring the existing home into the compliance because you have number of the stop work order, number of non-compliance permit issue on the existing homes. Let's separate the issues. So.
So I just want to establish with clarity here, did they, there's a fee connected with the stop work order?
That's a discretion of the inspectors.
Did they, did they, did you impose that fee and did they pay it?
We imposed it, but ultimately they paid it. They didn't pay it immediately, but at the time.
But they have paid it as of tonight, and that's $350?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a stop work order fee.
So is there also, in addition to that fine, is there an increased fee for the permits that they then had to get to complete the work? Or those, the cost for those permits, is it more because they started work without them?
No. I mean, the cost of the permit is the same. Sometimes you could do double cost. You could do triple cost. It's a discretion of the, the, the inspector and how he perceived the compliance from the applicants. Some people totally ignore the walk away, and some people.
So in this case, they did not incur an increased?
No.
Fee for the permit? So the $350 fine?
Plus the permit fees.
But the permit fees were standard permit fees that everybody would have to pay?
Yes.
Okay. Now, let me ask you about the nature of the work without getting too technical here. They've made statements that they were doing repairs, necessary repairs, and that once they got into the work, they found additional problems that they couldn't have anticipated that led to them doing work out of compliance. What are your, what, is that accurate?
Well, again, at the time, once we get there, the house was pretty much gutted. So I'm not sure how they started and how evolved. Okay, so per his statement, he's saying that the original permit was for the roof. Once they exposed the roof, they find out more damages needs to be, you know, addressed for the roof, you know, rafters and ceiling and roof trusses. But once I visited the home, the home was fully gutted. You know, no drywall at all. All the ball, you know, most of the wall was bare, and electrical work was going on. Roofwork was going on. The structural work was going on, so.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Nisi while he's standing up here?
No.
Okay. Mr. Barone, I have a question for you. Is there Code Enforcement Director Tom Barone? So, good evenings. How are you?
Good, good.
So how many visits? There was 14?
14 inspections.
14 visits, right? Okay. So I don't know if you'll know the answer to this, but do you have any idea how many of those visits occurred before the $25 per day fine began to accrue?
All those 14 inspections were prior to the.
They were all prior to the fine?
Yes.
In any of those visits, did the code enforcement officer or yourself make any contact with the petitioner?
That would be Doug Allen that has that area. I did not. Maybe Mr. Allen did, but I did not.
We don't know tonight. He's not here, so we don't know.
I would only be speculating.
Okay.
But out of the five permits required, three of them were hit with a stop work order fine. So that's, me and Amir had a discussion right after that hearing the next morning, and he advised me, three out of the five permits got a stop work order fine of 350.
He just said that there was only one 350 charge.
Well, there was a, Mayor and I had the discussion, and when you looked on the computer that, that day.
Was, was more than one.
Yes.
Was not the only 350.
Okay, so.
I just wanted to clarify.
So they paid more than the $350 fine?
Right.
Okay, and you're saying that they paid three $350 fines?
Yes, that's correct.
So they paid $1,050 in red tag fees?
It was for electrical, plumbing, and mechanical.
Yes.
Those were the three.
Okay, so they paid $1,050 in red tag fees?
That's correct.
Separate from the code accruing fine?
But the stop work orders really are different than the permit that's required. The stop work orders are issued to get the contractor or the homeowner to stop work.
Right.
So that's where the fine comes into play. As far as the code, code board permits, that was just so the owner would obtain a permit for the work that he was doing.
Right, but if the petitioner were to say that they paid $1,050 in fines to the city, whatever they're called, that would be true?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Barone?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for you, sir, or both of you. So the first question is, is this work completed and inspected and closed out, or is it still underway?
At this point of time, we have proper permit for every work that's being going on.
It's still ongoing?
It is ongoing, and as they are completed, we have passed few inspection. There are a few more pending as soon as the. It is ongoing, and as they are completed, we have passed few inspection. There are a few more pending. As soon as the subcontractors complete their work, they will be called in for inspection. But at this point of time, there is no non-compliant on the property.
Okay, and so what's your relationship to the homeowner? Are you the homeowner?
She's my niece, she's the homeowner.
She's the homeowner. Are you doing the work? Or are you just here to?
No, I'm her uncle, so I'm just, uh.
Who's doing the work?
We have a contractor and then subcontractors in place for the, the work.
Okay, has your contractor been the same, uh, let me restart over. Has this been the contractor doing the work from the very beginning?
No, sir.
Who's, who began it and at what point did the contractor come on board?
Yeah, in the beginning, we were just doing the roof work because we were waiting for the design to be completed for the expansion. And all the mechanical plumbing would have been redesigned as part of that expansion project. So all we wanted to do was just the roof.
Right, I got that. But when did the contractor come on board?
Subsequent, when we had to get permit for, um, for all this, like, once you got the red tag.
So, that's what I'm trying to get at. So, when you got the red tag or the stop work order, according to the building official, all the walls have been torn out, electrical workers, I mean, you done, somebody did a lot of work there with it.
Yes, I just want to contradict some of the statement that had just been made by various officials. Uh, one of the thing that, the fourteen visit that you, you asked the question, has there been any contact? We have had no contact from anybody on any of those visits. I don't really know what was achieved in any of those visits. They wouldn't have access to the property or any of that. They could just see it from outside. So I don't know, why would you go see fourteen times and maybe not talk to us, go inside or something? I don't know. Whatever they did fourteen times, we had no contact with them. And then, I, I may have made a mistake when I said, a court officer told us that they were setting aside. No, it was the person who wrote the red tag is the same person who told us that we're setting it aside. And that has been stated by me every time I've been in the podium, and that has never been contested by the city. Uh, but nevertheless, you know, we can, you know, bring her in, and she may or may not remember because I only deal with her, but she deals with hundreds of, hundreds of.
Okay, so let me get back to my original question, because I, I wasn't, I didn't get the answer that I'm trying to get at. So who did all this demolition work and started stringing wires and doing?
Yes, that was.
Did that without a permit?
That's how I'm explaining now. I know Mr. Amir said the property is fully gutted. Um, the eighty percent of the drywall still stands as of right now, that are original to the property. The only part that was gutted is adjusted to the roof because once some part of the wood was really, really damaged, the roofer suggested that we need to examine all of the trusses to make sure they're all not damaged as, as they are. And only way we could examine them, and there was no attic on the property, it was attached to the trusses. The drywall that was only taken out was for the ceiling. And there was one wall that was completely eaten up by termites, and that's the only wall that was rebuilt. But everything else in the house, all of the frame, all of the drywall that belongs to the wall, is still intact, even as of right now. So it's not completely gutted, it's just, that's the situation. And the carpet was completely molded, so we just took out the carpet. So, and the roof, that's the only work that has happened. But we were waiting for the bigger permit to come in for the expansion, which will have newer, uh, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, everything would have been completely redone. That was the confusion that was delayed. So whatever work we did was just to stabilize the roof, and there was necessary to examine the roof trusses, that's really auxiliary work came up. So when they're talking about electrical work, it's just whatever electricity cable was connected to the truss was just taken down and was hanging or whatever. That's, there's a new electrical work as such. So the kitchen, all these things are just really related to the wood damage that we were trying to address. Just the roof would be stabilized. But any of the work, mechanical, plumbing or otherwise, we would have done, we were going to do them with a new design, with a new, everything that was going to be, uh, done later on. So, but nevertheless, it just, we're just, we just find ourselves in this situation, and we just ask for your.
Mr. Sisler, I think you had. Yeah, I, I still don't think I heard the, the right, the answer. Who did the work prior to the red tags? You, or, or contractor, or?
A roofing contractor did most of the work, but we also helped out, like, in terms of taking out some of the bad damaged woods and so on and so forth.
Okay, so who was responsible for pulling the permits?
For roof, the roofer was.
Whatever, whoever.
Yeah, he did pull the permit.
Red tag for it.
He did pull the permit, but the question is that we should have put more permit, which I learned later, for the work we did under the roof to examine the, examine the trusses and so on and so forth. But that transpired on the same day, like, when the roofer was starting to take out the roof, it all looked really, really bad, and he poked and the whole thing just fell down. So he said, look, you really, this is water damage, we need to examine the trusses before. So it's not that we were planning to do this demo work, it just came just because of the discovery of the badly eaten up trusses.
Other questions? Thank you, folks, you might sit up front. Questions for anybody involved in this? Mr. Pogorlitch, keep in mind that the petitioner is going to get the last.
I just want to clarify a couple of things. Uh, the petitioner had stated earlier tonight that he spoke to Lori and he spoke to Doug, that he also testified at our hearing, that he spoke to Lori, he spoke to Doug, and he spoke to at least two people in the building department, and he just testified here tonight, or spoke tonight, and said he hadn't spoke to anybody. So, he, I think he spoke to at least a couple of people at least once, uh, in the, in the, in the code enforcement department. Just, just to clarify your question earlier.
When you suspend, when you postponed the accrual of the fine, if I understand correctly, you guys had a meeting, the petitioner was present, respondent at that time, was present. You continued, you, you delayed the accrual of the fine for a month to allow him time to come into compliance, correct? Coming into compliance for this violation is obtaining a permit.
Yes, sir.
Not the completion of the work, obtaining a permit.
Yes, sir.
The petitioner was, the respondent at that time, was present at that meeting?
He was resp, he was, he was at that meeting, and it was explained to him by me that compliance meant getting the permits.
That was my question. They were at the meeting, and it was clearly explained to them at the meeting. Did, did you tell them if that wasn't possible to come to the next meeting to request another continuation?
Uh, not in those words, but we, we did tell them that if something came up, that to stay in contact with, with, with Tom. And if, if they needed more time or something came up, that they could, they could show up at the next meeting, and we would entertain, uh, you know, another extension.
Okay.
We didn't promise them another extension, we never do.
Yeah.
But we did tell them that, you know, as long as they stayed in contact and, uh, you know, showed up to the next meeting, we would entertain that.
Okay. And other questions before, I'm going to give the petitioner the last word. Any questions before I do that? Okay. Any closing, brief, brief, we don't need to hear the same things again.
Yes, sir, so this very point that he just said, that's where the confusion was. Because the chair said, um, you know, get your application as soon as possible. If you need more time, remember to come to the next meeting and ask us for more time, and we'll consider that time. So I personally felt, I mean, I understand we got the letter that says be fully compliant. But I just thought what I can practically do is apply, to put the application in. And if I couldn't do it because of the drafting delay or whatever, that I was going to come back to the next meeting and say, I need another week to submit it in. So I didn't really even think I needed to come to the next meeting, because I thought I already put the application in, which I was asked for. So the ask was actually to be in compliant, which means apply, pay, get the permit. But my understanding was that apply, you know, don't delay, just put your application in. That's where the confusion arose in the second part. And that's why, otherwise, we would have come to the next meeting, would have asked the chair for more time, as the city is reviewing our, our permit application.
Uh, how many days did it take you to get the permit from the time you applied?
Almost three months, and that is because not just, that's because, uh, the, just Mr. Amir was saying that this permit application involved in significant expansion, which even though it meets all code requirement in terms of setback, in terms of height requirements and so on and so forth, officers are not happy to grant me this expansion, so there is any possible red tape is being put forward for me not to get that. So I have even given up that idea of having that expansion. I just want to finish housing its current state now and move on. But it took me a couple of months to realize that city is not going to do anything on my permit, it's just going to sit there and I'm going to keep getting the fine. That's when I begged Mr. Amir to come and meet me, advise me, how can I get out of this mess right away? He then told me, just focus on your current violation, put a new application in or revise application in just for this, and get over this hump. Otherwise, you'll be here six months and, and, and may not make much progress. So that's really what was the overall delay for our getting the permit, not within, you know, a few weeks versus a few months.
Okay. Thank you. All right, council members.
Ready to make a motion.
We need a motion.
I would like to move to reduce the lien to three hundred dollars contingent upon the receipt of payment within thirty days. And if it's not received then, then it would return to its original amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Well, you, okay, go ahead.
No, you go first.
Well, we'll let Mr. Sisler, since he's not the motion maker, but we'll make.
Okay, I've got, I've got some issues. Um, I will not support the reduction beyond, uh, any lower than, than cost, the, the city's cost. Um, I'm sorry you had to pay extra, but you, you gotta have it, you gotta do it right. I mean, there's, we have rules, we have procedures, we have policies. Um, if they're not followed, then you get red tagged, and anybody, and anybody else gets red tagged. Um, those fees cover other issues, they do not cover the violation. Um, it took a hundred and some, a hundred and ten days, I think, or a hundred and eighteen days to receive the, to, to, you got the, um, uh, the permits. Um, I, I know people who deal with the city, and there's, there's glitches, there's, there's occasionally where there's a misunderstanding. But I have yet to see it ever take that long to be the city's fault. Um, you were traveling, uh, others, other, other circumstances were, were coming into play. I'm sorry that that occurred, but, uh, red tags cannot offset this penalty. I can't believe that the code board voted again to come back to, come back, a unanimous vote to send something back to council less than the city's cost. Um, uh, but I'm just very surprised with that. I will not support the, uh, the motion unless it, uh, goes down to the six hundred and fifteen dollar cost. Um, it took a hundred and eight, it took a hundred and eighteen days to get this fixed. That's way, way too long. Um, your, your fourteen visits, whether they were substantiated or not, um, we, 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 we trust that they were there. Uh, we have no reason to dis, to, to, to not believe that they were there. And, um, it's, uh, I, I, I guess the project took on a life of its own, for that, I'm sorry. But, uh, we cannot, um, we have to, we have to maintain our standards. And, uh, the, the city, the city relies upon us to do that. So, I will not support the, the, uh, the motion below six hundred and fifteen dollars.
I'm going to go to Mr. Chambers and then give you back your opportunity as the motion maker. Mr. Chambers?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As, uh, council liaison to this board, I was at that meeting, and I sat through well over an hour of discussion on this issue. And I can tell you, the, the board clearly understood the wishes of council to re, uh, to retain the costs, city costs. And they did not do that. They listened to the testimony, they listened to all the stuff, and, and they clearly made a decision to go below that, even though they knew our wishes. So it's a tough one for me, because I have to support that, because they did know that, they were, it was unanimous, and they were individuals that we picked to be on that board. So I kind of still feel I ha, have to support the board. Uh, but I also know our wishes of council was to, uh, retain our costs. So it's a tough one for me. So this is part of the discussion, but I have a procedural question. Since we're a four-member board tonight, and if it goes two-two, motion fails, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had.
Mr. Chambers? Councilmember? Abel, I'm sorry, I'm used to the vice mayor sitting here. Councilmember Abel.
Well, um, I know that we, we said that we wanted to make sure city costs are always met. And, um, I still have questions about exactly how city costs are arrived at. And when it comes to fourteen inspections that the respondents didn't even know about, allegedly, it, it leads me to question, like, what is an inspection? You know, is it a drive-by? Does that really cost the dollar amount for that? And seeing as these, this, these, uh, the respondent has already paid, um, one thousand fifty in red tag fees, um, I think that it's fair to, to go ahead and reduce it to, to the three hundred. And I think that the code board came to that too, after careful deliberation, and like, uh, Mr. Chambers said, I, uh, trust them to do the job that we have, um, appointed them to do. And, um, that's why I've made the decision that I've made.
Thank you. So, I'm going to support this motion, but only for a couple of very specific reasons. One is that the petitioner has already paid one thousand fifty dollars in stop work order fines, right? So, that too, although that's in a different section of our budget, that's not their problem, that's our problem. And that too goes towards recapturing our, our, uh, expenses, our city costs, our hard costs. So I think the city costs have been made, and actually, if we go with three hundred dollars, that's thirteen hundred and fifty dollars altogether, they've paid in fines, not counting permit fees, that's fines. Which is almost half of what the original daily fine of twenty-nine fifty was to begin with. So, um, I'm going to support the motion, but I, I want to be clear on this, though, and I hope the code board, I see, I know we have a couple of members here, I want to be clear that, you know, this isn't my decision alone, this is the council's decision. But I, I'm not wavering from our previous guidance, and that is that we need to recover city costs. And, and if there's a reason for recommendation from the code board to come in below city cost, you can articulate that. If you come to the conclusion that we need to lower that, think of two cases where we've lowered it all the way to zero, but they were exceptional cases. Um, I don't want to get into the habit of below city costs unless there are some really exigent circumstances. And if the code board makes it a habit, this is three times now, this case is different, so I get it. But if they get in the habit of making a recommendation to, to us to go below city costs, they're going to get in the habit of not being supported by a couple of these council members up here, because I'm with Mr. Sisler on this, we got to recover city costs. It's not fair for the rest of the taxpayers to subsidize people that have been out of viola, that have been out of compliance for however long. It's just not fair to ask the other taxpayers to do that. So, that's not really the case here, because we've recovered our costs because of the red tag fines, so. Um, anyway, other discussion. We've beaten a horse to death, I think. Okay. All those in favor signify with aye? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes three to one. Your fine is reduced to three hundred dollars, payable within thirty days of tonight's meeting. If you fail to pay that three hundred dollar reduced fine, then it reverts back to the original twenty-nine fifty. Okay? Thank you very much. Mr. Pogorlitch, Mr. Samir, thank you.
Was the thirty-day contingent part of the motion?
Yes.
It was?
It was.
Say to that, I'm sorry.
Yes, it was, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you to the code board. I know it's not an easy task we ask you to do, but thank you so much. Okay. Next item on the agenda, thank goodness, let's get something easy like computer licenses, how's that, right? Next item is a resolution approving the renewal of Microsoft Office 365 licenses. Our information technology director Sally Cabrera will explain. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, Sally Cabrera, IT Director. Um, the city's IT department has been providing users with Microsoft Office licensing for over twenty years now. And it's served the city well. It's a worldwide and industry-standard tool for creating documents, spreadsheets, presentations, et cetera. Under Office 365, the city utilizes email functions in the cloud. And this has proven to be a significant improvement in keeping employees connected to inter-office communication regardless of where they are. It has eliminated the concern of sufficient storage for email. Most importantly, it's also eliminated our old email system's single point of vulnerability, especially when it relates to disaster recovery. Um, we are asking the city, city council to adopt a resolution approving the Microsoft Office 365 annual contract renewal for all licenses, maintenance and support in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars and twenty-nine cents. The annual contract runs from September first, twenty twenty-one, to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And the purchase will be made through Software House International, also known as SHI, with pricing piggybacking on current Florida state contract number four-three-two-three-zero-zero-zero-zero dash one-five-dash-zero-two. And the full amount is currently available in the IT budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and will be funded by account number zero-zero-one-dash-one-one-two-one-dash-five-one-three dot thirty-four-dash-twenty-eight. I will stand for questions.
Good, thank you, Ms. Cabrera. Are there members of the public who wish to speak on this item? I think we've lost most of our public, we have a couple. Okay. Councilmember questions?
None.
If none, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
To approve, uh, the motion for the, the, uh, renewal of the Microsoft Office 365 licenses.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Resolution is approved. Thank you, Ms. Cabrera.
Thank you.
Next item is a resolution approving an inter-local agreement for the distribution of boat registration fee revenue for marine law enforcement. B. I'm sorry?
B.
It is B.
That is B, isn't it?
It is B.
My B says Sunnydale.
Oh, yeah, the online, the notice is different from the paper.
Is it?
Yes, it is. At least mine is, unless it's a.
No, 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 let's get it straightened out. City clerk, I don't know.
Oh, it is different.
Excuse me, Captain, we're going to.
No, it's the boat distribution.
Pardon me?
I don't know what happened.
So what is the item that you're seeing as B?
I'm seeing B as the resolution replacing.
I'm seeing B as the resolution replacement of Sunnydale Water Treatment Chlorine.
Okay. Are these two just reversed on the electronic version? Is that what's going on?
I have no idea.
Yes, they are.
I apologize.
Okay. So what's the proper, are we in trouble to take, if there's a discrepancy here?
You are not. I would go with published notice of the agenda.
So the published version is the version that you're looking at?
I'm looking at notice agenda. I don't know what was published on the city website.
This is the version that's on the webpage and on front page in the lobby.
Okay. So what I'm looking at is the version that's been published. Okay. Okay. That's never happened before. Right? Resolution approving an interlocal agreement for the distribution of boat registration fee revenue for marine law enforcement. Captain Jacob Carlyle will present. If anybody in the community is watching this, just to clarify for you to help you follow along, we're just, there's a discrepancy between item B and C. So item B, if you're seeing it as the replacement of the Sunnydale Water Treatment Plant Chlorine Scrubber, that's coming next. Okay. Captain Carlyle?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm here this evening to discuss an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County concerning the distribution of boat registration fee revenue. It is recommended the city council adopt a resolution approving the interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County concerning the distribution of boat fee revenue in return for the continued assignment of a marine law enforcement officer within the city during the fiscal year of 2022. In accordance with Florida law, Hillsborough County imposes an annual registration fee on all vessels that exceed 12 feet in length and are operated or stored in the county. Since 1993, the city has operated under an interno, interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County for the shared distribution of these funds. The Temple Terrace Police Department Marine Unit routinely patrols and enforces boating safety and other related regulations on the Hillsborough River. As specified in the agreement, the city's $60,000 funding allocation will be used toward the salary and benefits of one full-time police officer assigned to marine law enforcement duties during the upcoming fiscal year. The agreement does allow for the temporary assignment of the marine patrol officer to other duties as needed during law enforcement emergencies. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Captain. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, councilmember questions?
Have one.
Just councilmember Abel.
I was just curious. I saw that this has been in place since, I don't know, 1993 or something. I was wondering, how often is that amount that is in the interlocal agreement adjusted for inflation?
So it's been in place since 1994. And over the course of that time, initially in 1994, we, we got $15,000. That was increased in 1995 to 15,600. Then it was reduced in 1997 to 14,500. And it kind of fluctuated back and forth like that for a couple of years until 2004, when it went up to 50,000. And then finally in 2006, it went up to 60,000.
Thank you.
Good question. I always had a question of, good answer. Appreciate that. So do we know how this amount is derived by the county? Do they pay, like the sheriff's office in Tampa, so many $60,000?
They do actually. I corresponded with the director that, that handles this and he put me in touch with the attorney that handles it. And it's a, the way that it's worded to me is that the county provides a set amount of money to, to ourselves, the city of Tampa, and HCSO, Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, every year through the annual interlocal agreements.
Did he tell you how that amount was calculated?
He did not. He actually, I asked him about a formula that's in place specifically within the, within the agreement. And he was not aware of what the formula was or how they came about that number.
Is that Mr. Decatur?
That is Mr. Paul Johnston.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'll take that up later. Very good. Other questions? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve a resolution approving the interlocal agreement for the distribution of boat registration fee revenue for marine law enforcement.
Second.
Motion in the second is there discussion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Next item is a resolution approving the replacement of the Sunnydale Water Treatment Plant Chlorine Scrubber. Deputy Director of Utilities Nathan Hale will explain. Welcome, Mr. Hale.
Evening, Council. Evening, Mayor. Here this evening to seek approval to award the chlorine scrubber replacement project to Sin State Contractors, Inc. We, back in May, I'm sorry, April, the project was put out to, for competitive bid. Four bids were received. They were reviewed by staff with Sin State being chosen as the lowest and competent bidder. Just to give you a little bit of information on this project, the chlorine scrubber is a life safety device. It is located at our secondary water treatment plant that is not manned 24/7. Due to chlorine gas being stored at the facility, FDEP mandates that a scrubber is on site. The scrubber is there to contain chlorine leaks. That's its sole purpose. And this project consists of replacing the device itself along with the controls, electrical panels, telemetry, and whatnot. So staff recommends that council approve, or authorize the award of the chlorine project to Sin State Contractors in the amount of $275,990.00. Funds will be transferred from contingency account number 430-1290-533.99-11 to account number 430-1921-53.63-31 with full payment being made from account number 430-1921-533.63-31. And I'll stand for any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Are there members of the, oh, there are no members of the public. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, councilmember questions? Mr. Schistler?
What does this do? What is this? Is this, is this just inside the entire building? It's an unmanned building. So is this something that's attached to pipes or?
Yes. So, so this is a standalone device. It stands out in the open.
Okay.
It is attached via piping to the stored building where the chlorine is held.
Okay.
So if a leak occurs within that building, the fumes are basically sucked out of that building, scrubbed through a chemical process. And then basically what's emitted out of the scrubber is non-harmful air.
Okay. Because I don't remember this in the, in the Capitol plan, any discussions in the past. Man missed it, but I don't remember. Why are we doing this now?
This, this was actually.
Is this an add-on? Is this to replace what we've got? Do we have a problem with it or?
This is to replace what we have because the current device is beyond its life expectancy and we're having issues with it.
Okay.
Now, to back up on that, to get, to answer another question that you have, this was actually budgeted last fiscal year. And due to COVID and some other technical issues, we were not able to get to it in time. So the funds were supposed to have been dropped back into our fund balance. And then all we're doing is picking those funds back out of the fund balance right now.
Because I don't remember this in the, in the Capitol plan, but that's okay. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not complaining about that. I'm just, I just wondered, wondered how this came about at this point in time. That's all. Okay, good. You answered my question. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions, councilmembers? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion? Getting ahead of myself.
You have to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Motion in the second by Councilman Chambers. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Thank you.
Next item is a resolution approving a task work order to asphalt paving systems for general asphalt resurfacing. City engineer Brian McCarthy will explain. Welcome, Mr. McCarthy. Good evening.
Good evening, City Council. Glad to be here. It's my first one. A little excited, so if I start smiling, I apologize.
We can't find you, Brian. It's okay.
And that will change.
Bring it on.
Again, I'm Brian McCarthy, city engineer. And today I'm seeking approval for the task work order to Asphalt Paving Systems Incorporated for the milling and resurfacing of various roads within the city's Community Development Block Grant area, or CDBG. Back in May of 2021, city council approved a general asphalt resurfacing contract that included four companies. Asphalt Paving System is one of those companies. The specific roadway locations within the CDBG area are the Serena Drive, Mission Hills Drive, and local roads within the University Square Townhomes. Basically, this task order, work order includes milling and resurfacing, replacing the pavement markings, and some specific curb and gutter sections. With that, staff recommends city council approve the expenditure of $174,502.66 to Asphalt Paving Systems Incorporated for general asphalt milling and resurfacing to be provided from account number 130-1724-541.63-11. Thank you for your time. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Seeing none, councilmember questions? Mr. Schistler?
Yes, sir. How does this dovetail with the presentation from several, couple, couple, three months ago? On the, we laid out the roads that needed to be addressed. Does this dovetail to that project presentation?
Um, if it's.
You may, it may be before your time. Is this?
Yes. If you have the answer. Okay. Mr. Tench?
Troy Tench, Public Works Utilities Director. To address your question, Councilman Schistler, this is part of that process. It's, these are roads that were programmed into that five-year plan. That's our CEIP plan. So these are some of the roads. They're not all the roads. But these are roads within our Community Development Block Grant District. Basically, everything that's located on the west side of 56th Street within the city. So there are some of those roads that are identified in that, in that program, yes.
Is the worst of those bunch, or some of the worst ones?
It is what we perceive as the worst design.
That's all I want to make sure.
Absolutely.
It's a clear in, in the information. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Mr. Chambers?
And maybe it's Mr. Tench, but you're going to seek reimbursement through CDBG?
Yes, sir, we are.
And is that a pretty good bet that we're going to get that money?
Absolutely. We've had all this approved. We've, we've gone through the environmental review process. It's all been accepted. We've been in discussions with the county. So we're very confident we will be reimbursed for this effort.
So we pay for it out of our street improvement fund and it goes back into that fund when we get reimbursed?
That is 100% correct.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve the resolution approving a task work order to asphalt paving systems for general asphalt resurfacing.
Second.
Motion is second by Mr. Schistler. All those in favor, any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Mr. McCarthy did an outstanding job. The only recommendation or suggestion I would have for a future presentation is to have a map to show where the streets are so the public can see. We, we have a map in the backup material, but it would be good for the public to be able to see where the streets.
Sure thing.
Good job. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the first public hearing and first reading of ordinance 1506 to adopt voluntary annexation of folio numbers. Wow, I have read this a lot. Folio numbers 038181-0000, 038190-0000, and 038205-0000, otherwise known as ANX 2101. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, will you please swear in all those who plan to give testimony?
I do?
Say the yes? Okay. Mr. Martin, would you please poll the council for ex parte communications?
Yes. I'll now ask members of the city council if they have had any ex parte communications with anyone regarding any of the matters that are coming before city council on this item on this evening. If you have had verbal ex parte communications, please disclose the, when the communication happened, where and with whom those communications occurred, as well as the sum and the substance of those, those communications. If you have received written ex parte communications, please disclose the form of the written communications, who sent those to you, who sent those communications to you, and the sum and substance of those communications.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I have had none.
I have had none.
Then we need go no further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. So Senior Planner Gus Carpus will now explain.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I do have, okay. I'm glad that you get to read off all those folio numbers because then I don't have to. So what you have before you is annexation application, annexation 21-01, looking to bring four folios into the city of Temple Terrace. The property is owned by Citrus Assets LLC. The applicant, applicant is Cullen Enterprises LLC. It's located south of Temple Terrace Highway, west of Davis Road, and north of Harney Road. The four parcels, again, would be coming into the city and it totals approximately 49.5 acres of land. The existing, what happened there? Okay, there we go. The existing zoning is PD 07-1784 of Hillsborough County. We're proposing the zoning to be when it comes into the city plan development. The Development Review Committee has reviewed the request and determined that the proposed annexation would not negatively impact the city's level of service or personnel. Hillsborough County City Planning, the City County Planning Commission has reviewed the request and has no objection to the annexation and feels it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the imagined 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. And staff recommends the city council approve the first reading of ordinance 1506 for the annexation of the folio numbers included in the request. The applicant is here. If you have any questions, they do not have the individual presentation.
Did they do not? Okay. That was my next question. Okay. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Okay. Very good. Councilmember, or the, well, councilmembers, do you have any questions on this item?
I have one.
Councilmember Abel?
So looking through the, all the documentation we received for this item, it said, I was looking for what is the reason why we're annexing this? And it said in there that the reasoning was that it's easy to hook up to water in utilities from the city. Besides being part of our comprehensive, comprehensive plan, was there any other, like, reason for why we want to bring this into the city versus having it be part of the county?
Well, and that may be a question that you would like to answer. Why would you develop it in the city rather than the county?
Welcome, Ms. Corbett, I believe it is.
Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward Henderson. I represent the applicant, Cullen. In consultation with my client and then also the underlying property owner who also owned the property to the south on Harney Road, Ms. Riles, given our experience with the entitlements process with Amazon, we felt it would be very beneficial to be working with, with the city. Oh, we would be served by utilities anyway. And so in conjunction with our conversations with your city manager and our client, we agreed that we would annex in. And that's where we, we wanted to bring all of the property into the city of Temple Terrace. And I will tell you, this week was a shining example of exactly why we did that. You were very nimble. I appreciate all of you who came in during a storm or potentially, you know, on the, on the cusp of a storm to come in to open the public hearings for this evening and have them here. Mike Owens, who is here, he's got to stay through a tropical storm and a Stanley Cup final. So it was an exciting trip for him. But that's, that's one of the reasons why. Because you have the ability to be nimble and to work with us. And you, you have, you're very economic development focused and you care about your city. And we really want to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Carpus or the applicant? Other questions for Mr. Carpus or the applicant? If not, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of four parcels of certain real property totaling forty-nine point five plus minus acres lying within the unincorporated area of Hillsborough County and located south of Temple Terrace Highway, west of Davis Road, and north of Harney Road, legally described in Exhibit A, attached hereto and made a part herof, redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include the annexed areas, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Good. Is there a motion to approve ordinance fifteen oh six on first reading?
To approve first reading ordinance fifteen oh six.
Motion is second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? The ordinance fifteen oh six will appear for a second public hearing and reading on Tuesday, July twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you. I just want to go on record to say I think it's unfair that you don't have to read all the folio numbers.
She wrote the ordinance, so she don't have-
The next item on business is the first public hearing and first reading of ordinance fifteen oh nine approving the Comprehensive Plan Amendment of folio numbers zero-three-eight-one-eight-one dash zero-zero-zero-zero, zero-three-eight-one-nine-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero, zero-three-eight-two-four-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero, and zero-three-eight-two-zero-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero, otherwise known as CPA twenty-one dash zero one. I'll open the public hearing. Mark Hudson, Executive Planner from the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission is here to explain. Welcome, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The Planning Commission is processing one plan amendment this cycle for the city of Temple Terrace. As already mentioned by the mayor, it's TTCPA twenty-one dash oh one. I have a single PowerPoint for this item, item F, and also it will serve for item G as well. This is the location of the plan amendment. It is the one you just discussed concerning the annexation. But again, it's near the confluence of Temple Terrace Highway and Harney Road indicated by the star on this map of Temple Terrace. This is a little bit closer in aerial this site. It's a little bit dated, but to give you an idea, the current site is vacant. It's surrounded by the dashed lavender line. Again, it's north of Harney Road, south of Temple Terrace Highway. To the east is a strip center anchored by Wyndixie on the eastern side of Davis Road. To the southeast, this, again, this arrow is a little bit dated, but it's the new site location for the Amazon Distribution Center. So, by way of a little bit of background, this was privately initiated. You just heard from the applicant's agent a moment ago. It is considered regular scale over ten acres. I will do a little bit of sidebar here, just to give you a little foreshadowing of some other items we'll have to talk to you about in the future. The legislature this past session approved legislation that changed the definition between a small scale and a regular plan amendment, increasing that size from ten acres to fifty acres. So, we will be coming back with you with a revised procedures manual for your consideration, but we would expect moving forward based on your past activity with plan amendments, most of the plan amendments in the future will be small scale and require only a single plan amendment, as this one requires two plan amendments because it requires a transmittal, transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity. But that's just a little bit of a sidebar to give you some things that are coming up on the horizon. As Gus already mentioned, the size of the parcel is just under fifty acres. In unincorporated county, it has a land use of Hillsborough County Community Mixed Use Twelve, and the applicant is asking for the same land use plan category in Temple Terrace or community mixed use twelve as well. And as you know, it's a pending voluntary annexation. This shows you your adopted land use map as it stands today with the lavender color of community mixed use twelve. Both to the east, west, and south has the same land use destination either in Hillsborough County or Temple Terrace. And to the north is an area that is urban mixed use twenty in Temple Terrace. And I mentioned already to the southeast is Research Corporate Park for Temple Terrace, and that is, of course, the site of the new Amazon Distribution Center under construction. And as you can see, the map doesn't change much. It has the same color and assigned to it in Temple Terrace as it is at Hillsborough County. So, really what the practical impacts are is it's changing of your jurisdictional boundary more so than the changing of the land use. I have a couple arrows and slides to give you a little bit of character of the area. This shows you the site, signified by the red dot. You can see the strip center to the east anchored by the Wyndixie. To the north, there is a church, three single-family homes, and some warehousing, and to the south is a milk and citrus bottling facility. And this shows you the Wyndixie that anchors that strip center. This is a little bit dated. I took this a couple months ago. I'm sure they've made a lot of progress on this, but this is the Amazon Distribution Center under construction to the southeast. This is the bottling facility near the intersection of Davis Road and Harney Road. This is the church that I mentioned that is on the north side of Temple Terrace Highway. And next to that is some of the warehousing facilities. And this is one of three single-family homes that are to the north of the site adjacent to it, south of Temple Terrace Highway. So, we look at this and analyze it based on its maximum build-out. I think when you see their zoning, they'll be looking for actually development potential that is much less than this, but we wanted to analyze it to this level to ensure that is in compliance with all the provisions of your comprehensive plan. Generally speaking, the land use today has entitlements of six hundred and thirty-seven dwelling units or about one point one million square feet of non-residential uses, and that does not change based on the action of changing from Temple Terrace Community Mixed Use Twelve to Temple Terrace Community Mixed Use Twelve. We didn't analyze this based on the goals, objectives, and policies in your plan. You have the full goals, objectives, and policies in your packet to review, but we felt that the applicant's proposal was consistent with provisions related to neighborhood conservation, community development, multimodular corridors, and major activity centers, both of which Temple Terrace Highway is a multimodular corridor, and there is an activity center designated on your vision map at that confluence of Harney Road and Temple Terrace Highway, economic development areas, growth management, citywide redevelopment strategies, the provision of public facilities, annexations, of course, the process you're going through now that you just heard on, from Gus, and intergovernmental coordination. We did talk to your Public Works Department, and they didn't indicate to us that there are capacity to serve both, this site with both water and wastewater. Transportation analysis will be done in conjunction with rezoning, and we did talk to the Hillsborough County School District, and there is adequate school student stations that would serve this area if it was developed residentially. This is the vision map that is in your comprehensive plan that we particularly utilized in, in looking at this plan amendment proposal. And our recommendation to the city council is for the city council to adopt a resolution to direct staff to transmit TTCPA twenty-one, twenty-one dash oh one to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and other state agencies for their review in concurrence as required by Chapter one sixty-three Florida statutes. We did have this reviewed by the Planning Commission Board on June fifteenth. They did find it consistent with your comprehensive plan and forward that recommendation to you. Of course, we're here to get your direction this evening, and we would have a second public hearing in the month of October or September along with the proposed rezoning for your ultimate decision at that time. With that, that completes my presentation, Mayor, and I stand for any questions. And as you already know, the applicant is present.
Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions? I, I have a couple, Mr. Hudson. So, just to clarify what we're doing here, this is for the, the first reading and passage of ordinance fifteen oh nine, which approves the modifications to the comprehensive plan. The next item is the approval of the transmittal of that approval.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Then we would come back to you at a later date for your final action.
Okay, because this one, this item, the second reading is scheduled for August seventeenth.
Okay. I was not aware of that date, but that, it mainly hinges on when the, the zoning is ready, and if that's the date the staff feels that the zone will be, will be ready, we should have that comments back from DEO, and we can present that at that time.
Okay, very good. Other questions for Mr. Hudson, or the applicant, or staff, or, okay. If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Imagine Twenty-Forty Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, future land use map for four parcels of land located south of Temple Terrace Highway, west of Davis Road, and north of Harney Road, consistent of approximately forty-nine point five plus minus acres by changing the future land use designation on said property from community mixed use twelve Hillsborough County to community mixed use twelve Temple Terrace for CPA twenty-one oh one, providing for amendment of the future land use, official future land use map of the city, providing severability and effective date for repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading?
I move to approve the ordinance fifteen oh nine.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? The ordinance is passed on first reading. Ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Next agenda item is related to the last agenda item. This is a public hearing resolution authorizing transmittal for map amendment of folio numbers zero-three-eight-one-eight-one dash zero-zero-zero-zero, zero-three-eight-one-nine-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero, zero-three-eight-two-zero-four dash zero-zero-zero-zero, and zero-three-eight-two-zero-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero, otherwise known as CPA twenty-one dash zero one. I'll open the public hearing. Mark Hudson, Executive Planner for Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission will be back to explain. Hudson, I think you already explained a lot of it.
I think I did. That the presentation I had before stands for this item as well. Again, I stand for any questions. I look forward to coming back to you on August seventeenth.
I do have a question. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? My question is, when does the new legislation concerning going from ten acres to fifty acres, when does that take effect?
Well, it supposedly takes effect already. It took effect on July first. However, we are modifying your procedures manual. We'll be bringing it back forth to you for you to concur with that legislation. So, any plan amendment, the next cycle for Temple Terrace begins September first. So, if any private applicants came in and they had a parcel that was over ten acres but less than fifty, we would consider that small scale. But we hope to have that back before you, before that September cycle starts.
Okay. So, this one is going according to the ten-acre rule because the process started before the-
Well, that was, that's an interesting question, but yes, that is, that is true. Because we've already, it's already in, in the hopper and going through that process, so it was initiated before the July first enactment of this legislation.
Okay, thank you. Council members' questions? Mr. Schistler?
The procedural question. Given this is a resolution for the transmittal, are we doing this ahead, should we be doing this ahead of the second reading of the ordinance that we'd be transmitting?
Mr. Hudson?
Could you restate the question again?
It may not be, it may, maybe, this may be stupid. We're doing a resolution to authorize the transmittal of this, this amendment, CPA, but we haven't done it yet. We haven't done a second reading of the original ordinance yet. Are we ahead of ourselves on this resolution? I don't care. We'll do it, but I mean, is, are we, are we taking this out of order?
From what I understand from, from your legal counsel and your staff, that this is in the proper order as far as the sequence of, of transmit.
Okay, okay.
I, I would concur with that. The only approval you have today is doing something. You don't have to do it. If the event doesn't develop, you may do it later if the event does happen. But it's perfectly proper for you to vote on this resolution.
Okay.
Good point. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I will close the public hearing. If acceptable, I will entertain a motion to approve the transmittal of CPA twenty-one oh one. Submit.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Resolution is passed. Thank you all. Next item is under New Business and Board Reports. There's a request from the Florida League of Cities for the city council to designate one official to be the voting delegate at the upcoming Florida League of Cities Conference. Election of league, the election of league leadership and adoption of resolutions are undertaking during the business meeting at the conference in August. One official from each municipality will make decisions that determine the direction of the league. The annual FLC conference is August twelfth through fourteenth, twenty twenty-one in Orlando. That's my understanding. Currently, there are three of us who will be attending, myself, Vice Mayor Donna Hugh, and Councilmember Abel. So, we need a motion to nominate somebody to be the voting delegate for this council.
Move that the mayor be appointed as our voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities meetings coming up in August. Is that the August? August.
Well.
I'll second that. Do you accept the nomination?
I'll be there. Yes, I'll be at the business meeting anyway, and I, I'm, I'm trying to think. I, I really want the benefit of the vice mayor, well, all of your input on this, but we have, we'll be meeting before then, so we'll have an opportunity to, if she has input, she can provide it. We can speak in a public meeting about it. There's no secret. So, I just want to make sure I have an opportunity to get her input because she's been very plugged into FLC. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Motion passes, and I will be there, and I will certainly involve all of you in those decisions. City managers report. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Schistler.
I have a-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't get New Business and Board Reports. I'm sorry.
Well, I don't have any board reports, but I, I, I look around, and I'm a little disappointed that there's nobody from staff here. I know everybody's had a rough week, and they're tired, and I appreciate that. But I had two things that I wanted to bring up tonight, but they're all gone. So, first of all, give kudos to the leisure services. Everything that they did this week with the, with the parade and the fireworks, I think was fantastic. I think it did, it was, I didn't hear a single grumble out, out on, out on the, the first fairway. The, the keyboard warriors and Facebook, they're going to do what they're going to do, so it is what it is. The parade was phenomenal. The police, the fire chief, your guys always do the great, the greatest job. Lori, everything that you did with promoting. I have had more positive comments from people with the level of communication that you and your people have put out. And I know it's, I know everybody's involved with it. I know you've got the, the, the signs and your, the, the, and I don't even know all the, the groupie stuff, but it's just, it, it's just phenomenal. I mean, it, it's night and day from what it was a year ago, and it's really, really good, and I just want to say thank you. Because a lot of people, you know, they come up to me in Publix and say, hey, I knew what was going on this time, okay? So, I, I wanted to say thank you for that, and, you know, Carl and his staff, and then Troy and the Public Works people were, you know, Mr. Chambers and I were down slinging sandbags on, what day was that? Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And these guys were down there killing themselves, shoveling sand into the bags for, for our residents. And, and also had a question for Mr. Tench, but he's not here, so I can't. Tried to flag him down, but he didn't hear me. Where do we stand with the sidewalks on south of Bullard? There was, I brought this issue up several months, couple, three months ago, and they're not fixed it. I just wonder where do we stand with that process? But they're not here, so I can't ask them. So, I think, my point is, we're here. I'd like to see some directors here. Mr. Nisi stayed till almost the bitter end. Captain Staley, thank you for staying. Chief, you know, but I know we have vacations and stuff like that, but they were here. Another tired, but, you know, this is the time we have to talk with them about some of these things so that the people who complain, who have a problem, who have an issue, can hear that we're trying to do something, and, you know, what, it's, it's another form of communication. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that, but I'd like to see our help here. Our people are here to help us because we got questions sometimes. I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schistler. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, and I wanted to echo all the thanks to our staff for the Fourth of July activities on the third. Thank you, police, fire, courts, leisure services. They were dear to my heart. Lori, thank you. Communication. But I also want to thank all the public that came out, especially in the parade. You know, when you're soaking wet, I was inside a car, so I wasn't quite as wet as my counterparts here, but what makes it even nicer to be in that parade is to see all the public that was as wet as we were enjoying the parade. And they came out a lot, and then everybody on the first fairway, that was really nice to see, and they did have a great time.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Council member, New Business Board Reports?
No, I just want to echo. I agree with you all. It's great.
Yep, I, I do too, and I, I think the whole council appreciates the Public Works, Leisure Services, Police, and Fire. Everybody's out there soaking wet and did a fantastic job, and again, the public that came. So, thank you, everybody. I'd also like to, to comment on Public Works and the sandbag distribution. I was out there also. I thought that process went very well. It was very busy. It came, seemed to come in waves, but no pun intended, but it was very busy at times when I was there on- when I was there on, I don't know what day I was there, but one of the days when I was there, it was busy. And the only thing, if, if, I'm sure you guys do an after-action, chief, with the department directors and Chief Kemp and Charles when he gets back. The only com, you guys did a fantastic job, as always. Good job with communication and everything. The only thing I would ask to be included in your after-action, your hot wash or whatever you do, is that the sandbag distribution, I understand why we put the dirt in containers. It makes it a lot easier to transport and easier, it doesn't make a big mess and all that, but it also slows the process considerably because you can only get two per, two people in a container at one time to shovel. And so you got one party on the left and one party on the right, and they're each filling ten sandbags, which depending on how fast they go, that can take twenty, thirty minutes sometimes. And so it took a long time to get people through, and there were cars backed up out on the three oh one sometimes waiting to get through that. And the only suggestion I would have is if there's a suitable place for us where we could dump the dirt, and people could then get around the whole dirt pile on all sides of it, and we could expedite probably tenfold the, the amount of throughput that we could do. So, other than that, that's the only comment I have for the whole storm. Everything went great. Communication was great. I appreciate that. You kept us informed. I tried to keep the council members informed. The public expects them to be informed. You know, a lot of people, they should just call down here, but they don't. They call the council members that they know, and so I appreciate the flow of information, chief, very much, so. Also like to thank Mr. Martin for helping us out tonight.
I wish I could have been more Pam.
Well, you did a great job. Thank you for, thank you for giving up an evening just to help us out. New business, any other new business? Chief, City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And really, you guys have all echoed a lot of what I was going to share. One thing I would point out, we all talk about, and we should, the great job that all of our departments, all of our employees do in the day-to-day goings-on of city business. What gets lost sometimes in a shuffle, but you guys commented on it, is when we switch gears, when we go into emergency management mode, we are equally as proficient. We have, we have phenomenal people willing to do phenomenal things. Within two hours of talking to you, Mr. Mayor, we had our sandbag operations up and running. And it wasn't, it wasn't because of anything other than prior planning and execution. I contacted our Public Works Director of Operations and Maintenance, Ray LeBlanc. He had people here. It was, it was out, dropped, operational within a couple hours. Really a great job. And that was on Monday. I believe you were there on Monday, Mr. Mayor. I'm not, I'm not sure if you went out Tuesday as well, but Tuesday I want to share with you because Council Member Chambers was, what was there, but I don't think you stayed for that first, that first wave of the storm that came through. I don't know if you were there for that, but my officers were there, and so were the crew from Publix Works. And at two o'clock, when it was time to stop, they didn't stop. They kept shoveling, and they kept working through. And at two forty-five, when that squall came through, they were still there helping our citizens. That's the kind of people that we have. When I needed to make contact with Lori Hayes, who was enjoying some time at the beach, she takes the call, she does the work that needs to be done, and we keep moving forward. We have phenomenal people, and I know our citizens by and large know that, but I couldn't let this opportunity pass without just saying a few, a few things on behalf of them. Exceptional people doing exceptional things during, thankfully, a very low impact to us. But you know what? I'll take them, Mr. Mayor, every time. The previous hurricane took a button hook and went around us. I'll take it every time. I'd rather be prepared and not need it than need it and not be prepared. So, thank you guys for everything that you do for us, and, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the conversations that we had as well. Always ready to do what we need to do.
Thank you, chief. And one last word is I'd like to congratulate the Tampa Bay Lightning on winning the Stanley Cup for two years in a row, and I'd like to remind everybody in Temple Terrace that these teams are the Tampa Bay Lightning and the Tampa Bay Buccaneers and the Tampa Bay Rays, right? They are our teams, not just the city of Tampa's teams, right? These are regional teams. Our tax dollars go to help support the facilities and the, and the, the whole business. So, Temple Terrace is celebrating along with the city of Tampa, and we're very proud. With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Chair. What happens with sandbags after the...